Please rise for silent invocation. And I would ask if all of you during its silent invocation, keep in mind the loss the city just suffered. And the loss to us all.
Amen?
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll.
Councilman Bastian.
Here.
Councilman Stilner.
Here.
Vice Mayor Tremont.
Here.
Mayor Burnett.
Here, we have a quorum, item four, Declaration of Vacant Council Seat, District One. I believe it is our sad duty at this point, moving forward to declare the seat open due to the untimely passing of our friend Bob Ford. And I would entertain a motion to that effect at this time. So moved.
Second.
Council comments. There being none, anybody else like to speak to this? There being none, call the roll.
Councilman Bastian.
Yes.
Councilman Stilner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tremont.
Yes.
Mayor Burnett.
Yes. Four oh. And forgive me. Resolution number nineteen dash four, calling for a primary and special election to elect a council member for District One and providing for qualifying dates. I just clicked the X on this, so I am reopening it now. I am just a little out of sorts at the moment.
Give me a point.
Yeah, give me a second, you're there too.
And I will read this into the record. City Council, Special Elected, here we go. And I have item five. Resolution nineteen dash four is a resolution of the City Council, the City of Port Orange, Volusia County, Florida, calling a primary election and a special as needed for the purpose of electing the City Council Member for District One, providing for qualifying period and election dates, authorizing the City Clerk to proceed with an election arrangements and providing for an effective date. Moved approved resolution number nineteen dash four.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Jake, we want to review the dates that we've laid out. Robin, somebody can do that for us.
Yes, sir. So we have a qualifying period, which the attorney, Lisa Lewis, who's here tonight, and Robin have looked at. The qualifying period will be from February eighteenth to February twenty-second. And then we'll have a primary election, which will be held April thirtieth, Tuesday, April thirtieth. And then we will have a, if required, we will have a general election on June eleventh.
Jake, on April thirtieth, sorry Jake.
April thirtieth will be the primary. June eleventh will be the special. Special, I said general, the special election. Qualifying period, for those that didn't hear the first time, February eighteenth from twelve noon until February twenty-second at twelve noon. Standard qualifying requirements.
And after tonight's resolution, the people can start declaring their candidacy, correct? Or at least going through the process.
Going through the process, yes.
So Robin, you are prepared. I know that you've already gotten some calls, I've gotten some calls, I'm sure we've all gotten some calls. I know that we've all sat down and laid this out. And when we first started talking about that, I felt an urgency to do this as quickly as allowed by the charter and by law, and as quickly as can be administered by the clerk and the Volusia County State Advisor of Elections Office. So basically what we're saying is, any candidates that wish to run for the remaining term, which is almost, almost four years in its entirety, would qualify during the week of February eighteenth through the twenty-second. After those candidates have qualified, that election will be held on April thirtieth with the passing of this resolution. If there are more than two candidates and nobody receives fifty percent of the vote at that time, then there would be a runoff between the top two candidates, which would take us to June eleventh. So that's the timeline. Or if only one person qualifies then, during the February qualifying period at the end of that, then we have no need for an election at all.
Right.
So if we have a one person qualifying, we're done. Otherwise, we're looking at two. Definitely done by April thirtieth. And if you have more than two, we could be done by April thirtieth, but we could go as far as June eleventh.
June eleventh, okay.
Tell me if, that recap of that, if I missed anything.
No, that's, that's right. Robin, did we get a rough order of magnitude of the cost?
We, we did. It's forty, just over forty-seven thousand dollars for each election, should maybe need to be helped.
Of course, I'd like for it to be done sooner, if nothing else.
And it'll actually be just a little bit more than that because of the advertising that I have to do.
Count on a hundred.
But that's the county fees, is forty-seven thousand.
Sure, count on a maximum of a hundred thousand dollars if we go the full.
That's based on registered voters and precincts and depending on how big.
Okay.
Where will those funds come from Jake?
Our pocket somewhere, I didn't budget for it.
No.
You don't budget for something like this.
So we'll, we'll just have to dip into our reserves.
I'm sure that at some point, there'll be a resolution coming forward to make the budget adjustment to take care of that. That's neither here nor there.
No, just, just a point.
We need to do this. Questions, council?
And that's the, that's the quickest possible timeline, right?
Based on the charter, you need all the minimums. You have to advertise before, that there's going to be an opening. So we wanted to do that for at least two week period. You had, what, seventy-one days, you said?
Yeah, so it, I mean, it can be done earlier, but it, it cuts it really close on getting the word out for people to qualify. I mean, it, it already is tight. But we could technically do it a little bit.
Even if you moved it up two more weeks, you're talking about all of one meeting.
Right.
Yeah. I, I.
And we would have to reschedule our regular meetings if they fell on different days because your local will say you're not going to have a meeting.
On, on the same night.
On election day.
Yeah.
This, this, what we proposed avoided that.
Okay.
And gives time for us to do the ads in the paper that we were required to do.
This'll work.
And get it worded out.
The staff didn't see any, any advantage to getting a elected official in place two to three weeks earlier. It's not like we're approving the budget. We, we will start those budget talks, but if you recall, in, in April and May, we're, we're having vision kind of looks and big picture stuff we go and build. We're starting to hit it in June and July heavy. So to get that person in here, and I, I would expect that anybody that qualifies would, would be sitting like.
They'll be here in the room.
Like Vice Mayor Tremont did, he, he ended up sitting here for quite a, quite a few meetings before he was elected, getting up to speed, so. And, and as we did last year, staff will gladly sit with any, any prospective candidate. And, and we spent hours with all our candidates last year, so we'll gladly do that this time as well.
This is the particular item that the supervisor came to help us with, you mind stepping up? Tell us who you are, and let's see if council has any questions for you.
Lisa Lewis, Supervisor of Elections of Volusia County. And I, just to touch on, when you were talking about the cost, it will be a little less than first quoted because I quote with having an early voting site in a city, if they want it. So if you, you know, and it's, it's not cost prohibitive to have it for a special election like this, it's just, it's not. So that would come off and it'll be right at forty thousand, plus your ads. So, and I will tell you, any way that we can, we cut it.
Okay.
So I mean, you know, that's, I like to give you high and come in low, rather than give you low and come in high, and then you're like.
Are you sure you work in government? Government sure does it the other way.
We like the deductive change orders, if you will.
Yes, we do.
We like when it comes in less.
Questions for Mrs. Lewis?
No, I mean, this is pretty much cut and dried, really.
Scott?
No, and thank you for coming tonight.
Sure.
Thank you, Lisa.
The service you provided at the county.
Uh, no questions, but since I have you in a public forum, well done on the last election.
Thank you, thank you very much.
With all the stories across the country and in our own state, proud of Volusia County.
Thank you.
Well, I know it's not just our city, since you thought you were going to have a little off season to get some things done and caught up. Well, we'll give you a chance to field test any improvements that.
Oh, good, thank you. I will tell you, you know, talking about your timeline, I was in Edgewater last night, as you know, they're having a special election coming up. And their charter is no less than sixty days and no more than ninety days.
Right.
For their general, so if they go into a primary, it even backs it up closer, so their qualifying starts next Monday.
Oh, wow.
So y'all have a little time.
Put the roller skates on.
Be careful what you ask for, right?
Thanks for coming.
Sure, no problem.
Tell Dwight, say hey.
Thank you, Lisa.
I will, thank you.
Welcome anytime.
Thank you, Lisa.
Anyone from the public like to discuss this item? There being none, back to us. No further comments, call the roll.
Councilman Bastian.
Yes.
Councilman Stilner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tremont.
Yes.
Mayor Burnett.
Yes, four oh, resolution nineteen dash four has passed, and everybody has their marching orders. I appreciate that. Discussion regarding process for interim council member. Margaret, did you want to lay the ground rules and let us know what you found?
Well, council members, your charter provides that an interim shall be appointed. You will want to move forward in a reasonable and diligent manner. I know that you will want to have a process where you feel like you have the opportunity to evaluate those persons that would be interested in serving as the interim city council member. So as far as how you want to define that process, that's what the discussion tonight will be for. You can advertise, as we do in a regular election. You can post, of course, the notice that you're looking for, those who would be interested. You want to set up some type of notice to you that they're, they're interested in serving and what you would like to see in that notice. Of course, they have to be a resident of District One in order to qualify. And a resident for the last twelve months in the city of Port Orange.
In the district, correct.
Well, in the district, perhaps, that's not really stated in the charter. The requirement for qualifying is twelve months in the city. But in order to serve and to qualify right now, you must be a resident in the district.
Okay.
And must have been for twelve. Twelve months to.
In the city for twelve months and currently living in District One.
Correct, that's correct.
Before they qualify, they have to live in the district.
Absolutely. And then, of course, those kind of qualifications you're looking for, or those aspects that you think are important to be able to get up to speed on an interim, council member responsibility, you know, that's going to be important to you because it'll be a fairly short time to come up to speed. And a lot of times, it's, it's tough stepping into that role, even as a new council member, expecting to have four years in front of you. But to step in and out, you're going to want that candidate to be prepared to, to work diligently, to come up to speed, and then to, you know, stay with you for that short period of time. So interviews, perhaps, may be one factor that you would want to consider, how you do it. I know with appointments, you do have an interview process before you, it's fairly informal. You can formalize it as much as you think is appropriate for this determination and kind of line out a timeline after you decide the factors that would be important for your selection, and then ask the city manager to assist with scheduling and programming of your meetings accordingly.
Let me just throw a, a few thoughts out, AKA thoughts slash questions. I know that the charter has defined when a councilperson misses three consecutive meetings without excused absences as a period in which they would and should be replaced. So keeping that in mind, if we were to use that as a yard mark in just a few short weeks, I'm going to have qualifying over with. I could probably take a couple of weeks to collect applications, advertise this, have a meeting in which we interview any prospective candidates, if we have more than one, and then make a decision. Would it make sense to schedule that meeting at the end of qualifying week, if necessary? And at the end of qualifying, because that's only two meetings at that point. And then if not, i- i- if we have multiple candidates, we know that the possibility of this could go anywhere between April and June, and then we probably ought to move forward with that. But in the meantime, we'll be able to advertise it, post a meeting, and then, and then be ready to do interviews, if necessary. It just seems, I don't know. If I appoint somebody, first of all, I want them to be qualified. But if I'm appointing somebody who's going to take, do the effort to get up to speed, I don't want them to have to go through all that, and us, for maybe where they sit for one or two meetings before they're replaced with somebody who's permanent. So is it, is what I'm saying, timeline, with a timeline, makes sense?
Well, yes, of course it makes sense. And, and it's up to council to decide if there are any concerns or factors that would want you to make it shorter or longer. Shorter, two weeks is pretty tight to, to move through the interviews. I think to get the interviews scheduled and get a special meeting called, you know, you, you could definitely do it in two weeks.
I want to do.
Now, of course, I, I say that, but it's the manager who will, you know, be implementing that, so we need to get.
I want to do that with measured speed, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
And I would encourage you to do it measured speed.
So if I'm taking what you said, we're going to kind of plan it so that those wishing to be appointed would do the notifications and everything, whatever process we come up with tonight, you know, fill out the application, whatever that process is, go through that process.
Advertise it, apply for it.
And, and advertise and apply.
Schedule an interview meeting, sure.
And then we would wait and see who qualifies? And then do the appointment out of that pool of candidates, or is it two separate?
No, no, that would be a separate pool of candidates.
Okay, okay.
Separate pool of candidates.
Okay. That's what I wasn't clear on.
Because qual, this would happen before qualifying week.
Okay.
Separately. There may be some people that want to do both. Do both temporarily and, you know, we may have mixed emotions about whether somebody who comes from the applicant pool also wants to run for it. I don't know, there's arguments both ways.
That's my next question, if someone.
But that's going to be up to the four of us.
If someone just wished to fill in and had no desire to qualify or run, they could be, a person like that had no desire to do it long-term. Anybody can apply to be in interim. As long as they live in the district. Okay. And they can do neither, one, or both. Okay, okay.
What other questions or comments?
That's it, that, that was my second one, was the, did they have to be, so they don't have to do both.
Scott?
Well, I'm glad we don't have to do this very frequently, and hopefully memories, memories will long be passed before it ever has to occur again. We'll, we'll figure this out, we'll come up with a process. I appreciate Margaret's insight on that, because this is clearly not something that, that I've looked at in depth and, you know, thinking this would ever happen, so I guess my initial thought is that the one thing I'm hesitant of is appointing somebody to the dais and making it appear as if it's a, a public endorsement from the dais as well. I'm a little uncomfortable with that. I, I don't want, I don't want to interject the dais itself into that special election. I still know that that's the ethical thing to do, or the right thing to do. I don't have a problem with appointing an interim if that needs to be.
And I've had people express that to me, that the people should make that choice and not us. So I understand your ethics, but from conversations I've also had, we can adopt that as a criteria as a council? Or that might be part of your personal criteria, that might be part of your personal criteria, it might not be part of mine in the interviewing process, but each of us has a vote.
And my, 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 my guess is that anybody that's looking to fill this seat on a permanent basis will understand that. I just think that, you know, if we are going to appoint, it sounds like we may need to have to do it interim, that I think it would be best served for us to, to have an interim that's interested in doing it on a, on the short-term basis until the, the wishes of the residents have been made clear through the election process.
And I think that, I would hope that whoever's running would take that from an ethical viewpoint.
Sure, I think they will.
I would hope, I understand that. But that doesn't preclude them from, if they wish to apply for both, they certainly could.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Chase?
I don't really have any comments. Or any questions, really, you know, it's, the election's going to be right around the corner. I think the people will decide at some point. There's a lot of, there's certainly a lot of qualified people in District One.
Pull your microphone up.
Sure, there's a lot, there's a lot of qualified people right now that could, that could step right in and be a very, very big asset to the city. At the same time, we, we do have elections coming around. I'm more inclined to allow people of Port Orange to decide who sits in these chairs. It's, it's, that's sort of my little personal criteria. I have a hard time picking and choosing between highly, highly qualified people.
My doc.
What's that?
Our charter does say that shall be appointed.
Of course, yeah, and if, if that's what we decide to do, then, then yeah, I'll, we'll, I'll look at it when, when, when that time comes.
Let's hear from the public. Would you like? Jake?
You want me at the end?
Yes, please.
All right.
Coming up, Phil.
Hi. Good to see you, Phil. Phil Madsen, I own Anytime Fitness at thirty-seven sixty-one South Nova Road. Got it? Last time I got in trouble for that, so.
That's okay.
First want to express my condolences. I know that all of you were close to Bob Ford, I didn't know him well, but I know you did. And I know I lost your friend and fellow councilman, I, I just want to express our condolences. I want to add my voice to what I'm hearing from the council, and I'm, I'm happy to hear it. The one thing that comes to mind is, whether the seat was filled or not, it would still take three votes to pass anything that the council would do.
Correct.
So whether the seat's filled or not, it's, it doesn't seem to me to be urgent, given that the election would be, would be coming soon. So it's not like you're, you're fundamentally altering anything, really, in terms of power or mischief or anything like that. To put that much time into interviewing and deciding on somebody to appoint where it could only be undone quickly by an election, seems to me to be kind of a waste of time. And you're right, it does smack of, you run the risk, it would smack of favoritism and insider politics with the other solution, just leaving it open to the election being, you know, as, as good as it is. I'm, I'm really pleased to hear, you've got the opportunity to do exactly the opposite, to really get your best buddy into the system and give him, her lots of exposure in favor of the election and all of that. I'm glad to hear the sentiment is, is, is going the other way, and I, I just want to commit, you know, add my voice to it, so, for your consideration.
Appreciate it, thanks, Phil.
Appreciate it.
Who else?
Congratulations on your book, Phil.
Anybody else like to speak? There being none, back to us. Jake, you've got some thoughts that you want to share?
Yeah, some, some thoughts that I've shared with you individually, but I'll add them into the record. You and I talked about the human psychology of, of an incumbent that, that Councilman Stilner just mentioned. Somebody sitting up at the dais, given the right circumstances, may have a leg up, regardless of who you choose. Something to think about, that's neither here nor there, other than it's a fact. Staff is standing by to do whatever needs to be done, but I would ask that at least minimum standards of what you might want to see be defined prior to the qualifying period, which is coming up fairly quickly. We have one more council meeting before the qualifying period. We can have a special meeting whenever you want, before that qualifying period. But, but. We have two meetings. I know you want a measured approach to this appointment.
When you say minimum standards, that we decide, we're talking about an appointment.
That's what I'm talking about, too. You had mentioned that you want to do this.
Voters decide for the election, this is us decide.
You said you want to do this before the, before the qualifying period started, you had mentioned that.
Starting the process before qualifying. So that during qualifying week, we could actually have.
That is correct, so in order to start the process, I need to know what the, what the guidelines are.
Gotcha.
For these people, because Robin's going to get fifty phone calls tomorrow, what do you need from me? And, and our answer cannot be, we don't know. The answer's got to be, send us a full resume, send us, are you planning on running? If you all decide that tonight, let us know, if you don't, then, then, then the sky's the limit. But we would like to tell people from District One who call us tomorrow, at least some general guidelines that we can, we can ask them for the world, and you can take what you want later, but it, but it's hard to keep on calling people back, now we need your date of birth, now we need where you're from, now we need what color your hair is, now we need whether you've ever been a, a council member anywhere else in the world. Things of that nature, those are the things we're thinking about, so.
Well, we got to be careful of Title VII questions, but.
Okay, so, stop with the age piece, but it would be amazing what council members ask us to ask people, so. But if you can give us some guidance.
How about this, we already have a board application. We could use that for the basic information, and along with that, ask them for a resume slash recap of their experiences that are relevant, and then also ask them the question that, do they plan to run? Because that's important, obviously important to some of us, do they plan to run for the full-time position?
Board application, resume to include appointed and elected municipal jobs.
Relevant experiences.
Relevant experiences.
Well, I will say relevant experiences, because Jake, you're a terrific example of somebody who didn't necessarily have city manager experience, but you had comparable experience elsewhere.
I'd say he did.
And I don't want to feel like we're not being inclusive.
At least that's what I told you.
We went with that.
And we went with that.
And if I remember, the person who sat right here argued the loudest on your behalf, so.
Sure did, sure did. Board application, relevant experience, and whether they plan on running.
And a resume and proof of residency, yeah. Well, I guess it'd be their address or their driver's license, yeah.
That would be in there.
Okay.
That's, that's good enough for us.
That's sufficient, council?
Yeah.
Is there anything else that you want to ask?
Mayor, you may want to establish the. Mayor, you may want to establish the timeframe in which the application acceptances would close. In other words, until X date, we will accept applications, so that you know then that you can start reviewing and preparing for the next app.
February 1st?
Mayor, the January workshop, by the way, is wide open.
Oh, okay.
The January workshop is wide open to be switched to a special meeting if you wanna make the appointment that night.
Is there, is there any reason why we couldn't make the appointment on Feb, on the workshop of February 26th?
Absolutely. That's free as well.
I want the information to review, but honestly, I think the whole idea was, is that we don't wanna appoint somebody, and then a few weeks later, only one person qualifies and we're done, and, and thank you very much, and we've put all this effort into it, and
But that's, I guess that's the way that cookie
On this
I mean, that's a, that's a possibility, but I would think that it's unlikely, you know?
I think we need to prepare for both contingencies.
Yeah, absolutely.
I like February 26th. Yeah, because
Is an open workshop, we can make it a, we can make it a special, we can throw a special meeting on there.
And it's after qualifying, and every, I, I mean, everybody would have their application slash qualification, however they wanna do it, we'd have all that paperwork.
Then we won't have to ask them if they're gonna run, 'cause we'll already know.
We already know.
All right.
So the application process, you'd be prepared to
Tomorrow.
Begin taking it
Tomorrow.
Immediately or near immediately, Monday, what do you need, Robin?
No, we're, we're, we're good, immediately's fine.
I like immediately.
Some, some have indicated before immediately.
So two minutes after this meeting ends, God bless you, girl?
I'm ready.
Okay.
And did you Do your special meeting on February 26th?
We certainly would
5:30?
Probably, we certainly don't wanna wait till 6:30 or 7 o'clock. It could be a very busy evening, depending on how many people we may or may not have. So I'm thinking maybe 5, 5:15?
Yeah, can you make it?
Does that work for you, Chase?
That works for me.
Okay.
And when do you want to close? When do you wanna close the application?
Uh, that's a terrific question. If we're talking about, I would say the week, week prior to that meeting?
Well, your agenda normally would go out at least a week prior.
So if the agenda goes out on Thursday, then we should probably close it on Tuesday, so that we have a
Why don't we do it on the Monday of when qualifying starts? The, the, the application for the appointments
You're looking at the closing date for applications?
Yes. Yes.
The Wednesday before the 26th would work for staff. The 20th.
So the 20th?
That gives us a, a few days to
Gives you a few days to do it, gives us a few days, 'cause I'm just gonna jet the resumes and the information to you just rough, and then we'll work on the agenda and get it out to you in
We'd appreciate it, 'cause I'd like all the time that I can have with it, yeah.
Yeah, we can send them as they come in. And then, and then we'll send them as a batch after they're closed, to make sure you haven't lost one in the email. Perfect, yeah.
Perfect.
So I wanna recap this, so to make sure that we have consensus.
And the public knows.
And Cosmira knows.
We're, we're gonna have an application period that begins immediately and ends on February 20th. Special meeting on the February, on February 26th, and that's contingent on what happens with qualifying, if we need to, need to fill it or not. Okay. Any other questions, do we have consensus?
You wanna repeat the qualifying period just one more time, so everybody? It's February 18th at noon till the 20th at noon, correct?
22nd at noon.
22nd.
That is qualifying for the election.
For the election.
Yep.
Monday the Monday the 18th to Friday the 22nd. And that's running for the full-time seat.
Yep.
And that is almost the entire four-year term, so
Short of a couple months.
Three and a half.
Six months, yeah.
Not gonna have to run, turn around and do it again in 18 months or anything like that.
Correct.
Any other questions, council?
Just that board application, for those who might want to jump on that tonight, is on our website. They can, they can just apply. Just pick any of the boards that in the comments marked that you want for the paid
City council, yes.
And it's on the city clerk. And it's on, it's under your department, right?
Right.
So website, your department.
And we'll, we'll get, we'll get better website direction to an application tomorrow morning, perfect.
But it is there.
One other question for the clerk. I know we verify voter registration for the residency. Do we have a time factor we need to make that verification, does the supervisor need?
They just give you a, a copy of their voter registration card when they qualify.
Great, okay, thank you.
Very good. Anything else come us, before us this evening? If not, we'll be back in 27 minutes.